...is being held accordance with due public notice thereof in pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the prior meeting.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Remy Pelosi is here now. Detective here a motion for the approval of resolutions and decisions number 33, 2014, James and Margaret Monteburo, number 34, 2014, Landmark Development, number four, number 35, 2014, East Shore Development Company LLC, number 36, 2014, Robert Maguire, number 37, 2014, Catherine C. Roche Trust, number 38, 2014, Martin and Meredith McGinn.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. First case is Dominic and Tammy Pastore, 9614 Amherst Avenue, block 430, lot 25.06 in the WSD District to grant a C variance for front setback for extended deck on Amherst Avenue and for driveway curb cut on Amherst Avenue and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin? Roger Rubin?
The subject property is a single-family home under construction on the combined site of two townhouses which were demolished to make way for this house, which was approved and permitted with no variances. The corner parcel is 99 feet on Monroe and 65 feet on Amherst Avenue for a total area of 6,435 square feet. The house has five bedrooms. The following changes are proposed: to enlarge the second floor front deck on Amherst Avenue so it is 14.62 feet from the front property line, as approved it is smaller and 20.41 feet back; to move the garage off of the Monroe Avenue driveway forward toward Monroe Avenue leaving space for a pool and lawn beside and behind it; and to create a one-car parking space on Amherst Avenue to compensate for the loss of a space on the Monroe Avenue driveway because of the garage move forward. Variance is in comments. Number one, the front setback for the deck on Amherst. Per the 200-foot front porch setback survey, the required porch setback is 20.41 feet and the approved deck is under construction to that setback point. It is six feet deep by the width of the house, right over the first floor porch, having the same dimensions. This application proposes enlarging the second floor deck only by five feet six inches toward Amherst so its overall size would be 11 feet six inches by the width of the house. As such, it would be 14.62 feet back from the Amherst Avenue front property line requiring a variance. The usual considerations apply herein as to decks, obstruction of view or privacy and possibly aesthetics. There would appear no view obstruction as this new deck, as this new deck front lines up almost precisely with the two decks of the two townhouses to the left and the three townhomes further to the left are already obstructed by the wall of those two to the left of the Pastore house. No bay views are interfered with and there is greater aesthetic conformity with the neighbors to the left as well as more usable open space for the Pastores. As to the noise and privacy, there is almost 22 feet between the Pastore house and the house to the left. Garage location is, the garage location being greater than 26 feet from the rear. The original plan had the garage off of Monroe at the rear of the Monroe driveway with two parking spaces in front of it for a total of three spaces as required for a five-bedroom house. It is proposed to shift the garage so its front is 45 feet from the rear, which is a variance. The intention of the 26-foot limitation was to prevent freestanding garages from blocking light and air from windows of houses next door. In this particular case, there are no houses next door and there will not be houses as the Lambert E. Parking Lot is dedicated to that restaurant and Marina by previous site plan action as well as a contract with the city. So not only is there no negative impact, but there are two distinct positive aspects. The new position opens up view corridors to the bay from townhomes built across the Lambert Lot and the structure is 25 feet farther from the neighboring townhome's rear yards, the Amherst neighbors, thus allowing more light and air and less building mass. Three, curb cut on Amherst. The ordinance does not allow curb cuts on through streets such as Amherst on corner lots. They propose in this application a curb cut on Amherst needed because they need three total parking spaces and lost one in moving the garage. Per the Ponziro plan, the new driveway is close to Monroe and Police Chief Wolfson, who reviewed this, feels it is too close to the corner for safe passage of cars turning right from Monroe onto Amherst. He has no objection, however, if that cut is moved as far as possible to the other side of the house, furthest from the corner. The applicant should amend their request accordingly for the board's consideration and supply amended plans. Number four, amended plans are also necessary regarding the discrepancy between the architectural and the Ponziro site plans regarding pool location. Both site plans should agree that the Ponziro location is correct and legal. No additional conditions are proposed at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Members of the board, my name is Chris Ballance and I represent Dominic and Tammy Pastore, owners of the property located at 9614 Amherst Avenue. It's in the Waterfront Special District, block 430, lot 25.06. It is the corner right across from, occupied by two townhouses. The Pastores bought both properties, it was a subdivided property, consolidated the lots and have a new single-family home under construction. Back up a little bit. Once they got started, they looked at the way that some of their improvements laid out, which is the genesis of this variance request. After looking at the plan, or throw up that rendered plan for me, after looking at the site, they came up with some ideas that in hindsight are really, actually really good ideas with respect to the site, the neighbors and the way the site will operate. They are asking for a variance to extend their second floor deck five feet out to line up with the decks immediately to the east of them or down Amherst Avenue. Those decks will still be about 14 feet and change back from the property line on Amherst. So they still enjoy about, almost a 15-foot setback with the five-foot increase that they're asking for, but that nonetheless is a variance for the, for the second floor deck along Amherst. The second request, which requires the, the front door of the garage to be, to be no more than 26 feet from the rear property line. Right now, if anybody went to the property, I'm sure you all did, there's, the slab is back here for the garage in the corner. Having thought through that, they, they would like to move the garage up so it's 45 feet instead of 26 feet from the rear property line. There are several good reasons, we believe, for that. Primarily, you've got Lambert's parking lot here. It opens up, with the garage here, it opens up this corridor to the bay for all of those townhouses across the Lambert's parking lot. Otherwise, they'd have that view obstruction. Number two, it provides the Pastores with some level of privacy from the Lambert's traffic and the headlights to enjoy their, whatever, side yard and, and their pool. Number three, it opens up the neighbor's backyard so they don't have that wall right there on their property line. If there's, if there is a case where moving the garage forward is probably a good idea, this is all positive with respect to that provision in the ordinance. That gives them two parking spaces off of Monroe. They are then asking for a parking space off of Amherst. We have been in discussions with the chief, you're not allowed to have two curb cuts, you can't have a curb cut on each front. So it's a variance for that second curb cut and we have been discussions with the chief and the chief says so long as it complies with the state statute, which requires that you be exempt. David and Arthur have the discussion today and that's what the chief has told us about all that.
Then I'm, I'm going to go somewhere, make it a phone call to the chief because he told me as of yesterday that...
And that's, and that's mine.
He's changed, he's changed his mind?
We will accept as a condition of approval that it be 25 feet from the corner and with the subsequent approval of Chief Wolfson.
And, and if the chief is not satisfied with 25 feet, you'll place it wherever he wants it to be.
Where he says it goes.
Okay.
Art Ponziro is my, yes, Tom.
The correct layout of the pool is depicted on the illustration here. The architect inadvertently, it was an earlier version, that is, and he had it depicted in the other direction, 90 degrees more or less from what you see here. This is the correct one. Relative to the conversation with the chief, I had a good conversation, good discussion with him. We, he pointed out to me the requirement for the 25-foot distance for the driveway from the intersection. By the way, it's measured from the point of curve right at the end of Monroe on our side, so it's 25 from there. Actually, with a 10-foot sidewalk area, it's a full 35 feet on Monroe Avenue. While I was out there looking at that, after the conversation, I noticed that from the point of tangent here at the curve on Monroe, 25 feet back is already painted out by the city. And then the cars parked side to Monroe Avenue at that location. So what we'll have here is a full 25 feet clear here as well as on Amherst when that's implemented. So there'll be no parking from the driveway back to the corner, so it's a clear view. So the chief was happy with that. I will state that for the record.
If you can tell us, you're having a hard time understanding.
Okay.
Does the 25 feet start from the corner?
Correct.
On our side, on our side.
You can see it from there, back 25 feet. All right? The other two variances that Chris mentioned, one with regard to the porch in the front, the building as it was designed and under construction is a bit back in a hole, if you will. Stephen Cookie's building.
Get you?
Yeah.
I'll bring it around.
Close to the corner, close to the property line of Amherst. The adjoining building, which by the way is nearly, is, it was identical, that building, it was identical, we were building twins a few years back. It was identical to the building. Is at that location, we're essentially matching the porch, so in my opinion, his setback is of no consequence, it's certainly not bothering anyone, there's no view blocking or anything of that nature. Matches the setback immediately adjacent and it's much greater than the setback across the street of Monroe Avenue.
Can I ask you a question about that? I asked you outside, you don't know, but we need to find out now. Is that deck going to be cantilevered? Because if it's supported by structure underneath, it's going to be a monstrosity.
I've heard that was pointed out, I see the question, the architect's plan and it shows it's supported with quality. I don't know the detail of the problem, my guess is the building is a pretty lathered building. My guess is they're going to be going down with the quality.
That's 14 feet from the ground to that, to the hat, the bottom of the hat.
Supported from the ground.
And another, all right, on that pool, the papers usually hand it out, the pool is facing another way.
That's incorrect. In addition, it's the correct plan to consider.
That's the correct plan.
Yes.
As you can see, the garage, as mentioned by Chris, has been pulled up to get a little open space for the swimming pool and there's a secondary benefit of that in that now it opens up the entire corridor. There can be light and open space all the way through there, right to Amherst and essentially right to the bayfront. Normally are, it actually shuts off that. So this is one of those cases where to give the variance, to pull the garage up further to the front, is actually better.
Art?
Yes. That's from the old building that was there. Oh, not on Monroe, I'm sorry, Amherst I'm pointing to, Monroe, no. Oh, yeah, sir. No. Here he was. And it's not regimented, the parking lot only, you pull up, there's a... Former building was a duplex, so there were actually two driveways. One is being... Close to our own Amherst. Here they are here.
There aren't obviously any of those.
It's pretty much by moving the drive space to drive over a little bit, we're going to end up, actually lose eight feet. We're going to end up getting a lot more green space on the corner, which is one of the most beautiful green spaces in our city. Stephen Cookie's right across the street, it's going to supplement that pretty well.
Art, Earl, what is the purpose of, why are you moving the garage forward?
It provides some open space. It pulls kind of like in a hole, if you will. You have the building here, garage tucked back, open for the corner. In addition to that, we are adjacent to a parking lot. We're trying to buffer the pool for the parking lot and at the same time, give it some open space and some light. So if you look at that on balance, you figure if you pull the parking, the garage up a little bit, you get that open space. Secondly, what you do is you buffer the pool itself, the access from the home to the pool from the parking lot. Look at this plan, pull the garage all the way back, you have the parking lot right up the, right at the side pole. We thought, talking to the client, the architect, on balance, we're looking at all that together. I don't see a negative associated with that.
Negative is it's a variance and you, and you got to have an extra curb cut.
But the variance, variance for that, in my opinion, just looking at this unto itself, let's not discuss that for a moment. The variance here, there's a benefit, the benefit to ride is that it's opening up that corridor for not only this property, but I'm not talking about whether the benefit for us, disregard that, but here, adjacent to the parking lot and directly here is brand-new units building. We're now going to have that view, open space right through here. It really does open that corridor up. There's a benefit of that.
And Mike, if you look, the townhouse is here on, actually, the rear of them, the living units, have multiple decks, like a four decks.
Right.
This unit owner, actually contacted Dr. Pastore, asked him for something to do about the garage at that location, as did this guy. And, which was interesting because, just going to ask for it anyway, there's a right question this guy to ask because that view that he has through here will be gone. And he asked if something could be done about that, where he actually...
Chris, how, how high is the fence going to be around for the buffer on that? Five foot or six?
I don't know the answer to that.
Five or six foot fence? That, that blocks, that would block headlights. That would block headlights and everything from the parking lot.
Would it amount to?
I know, it'd last six for, for a pool.
Right.
Right, so six foot will block, six foot will block all lights.
Probably six, correct?
Pardon?
Probably six, but it's...
By six. So that really blocks headlights from any parking lot down.
I think we go where is that provision where it is commercial, you could actually jump it up.
The other, if you have a swimming pool, you're allowed to have six feet. It has nothing to do with commercial.
The other question I had was moving the garage up, that's like two spaces, we're really losing the space back there. Well, if the garage was back, you'd have two spaces in front of the garage. So you're, you're assuming that they will park in the garage and one space in front of it, right?
Either drive, everybody else is having this.
Right. But if it was back, you'd have two spaces in front of it, it'd be three spaces on that side.
That's right. And, that's right. The curb cut in front comes about as a whole moving garage, to pick up that space, so it's at both ends of the parking area and that location, for the additional one space to pick up.
Why didn't you line the driveway to the pool back?
Basically, I'm talking to the owner, basically the conversation we had, in his discussions with the neighbors about moving the garage away from the corner as well as the neighbors here that missed a moment ago, but to move it as far as you could away from that to give some open space back there. That was the primary reason for that.
Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak? Public portion is closed. Any comments from the board? Mr. Pomisano?
The one comment I have is for the front corner of the deck. I'd like to see that on a 45-degree angle to, so it doesn't protrude out towards Amherst Avenue squarely. The upper, the upper portion of the, of the house is on a 45-degree angle also. The houses next door have their decks at a 45-degree angle, just a shortcut to cut the one corner off. It's only, it's only aesthetically looking and maybe not to come all the way out to the corner. On the front deck, all the way out in the corner, that's it, up there, all the way, all the new deck, up the second floor. If they, if that could be cut on a 45-degree angle, is anybody else?
Not from, just a new porch.
Just a new porch, 45-degree angle on the front because the houses next door are like that too.
It's, 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 well, I, I'm sorry.
That's fine. No, that's fine. Great. Great. Fine.
Do you have to say, flip it by say four feet?
Yeah, on a 45-degree angle, because you have, you have reception.
Yeah, match that, that portion second off. Look at the other, get that. Say four foot, that's...
Yes. The, the house may have the next row, but you're going to be like, similar, same cut.
I, I just want to reiterate my comment, if, if that deck was cantilevered, it, it has no obstruction whatsoever, but I feel the support under there, it's, I mean, that support bypasses the first floor deck, goes up to the second deck, it's going to be the entire length of the house and I think it's going to be a monstrosity when there are supports under there.
Ballance, Chris?
If you have support for that deck coming down to the ground, straight up to the second floor for that whole length of that house, I think it's going to be a monstrosity. I don't know if it can be cantilevered or not, but it's going to look terrible.
But you've got a, pretty well, playing on Chris, nothing's impossible.
Excuse me, hey?
The building is essentially, that would be a six-foot cantilever. Create that six-foot cantilever, there's a bunch of builders around here, you're going back in 18 to 20 feet, 100, I don't know if you care, I don't know how you slip the beams in there, can it be six feet?
Well, they could have come in and asked for the variances before they built the building too and, and they've already torn the building apart several times, so I'm, I'm just saying what it would look like now, that's my opinion, so.
I would leave, I'm certain, that's what I mean, nice to meet the ornamental colleagues.
They can look as nice as they can be. You, you have a giant 20-foot supports, the entire width of the building with nothing under. Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Has there been talk about the tree that's on Amherst Avenue? Could we have it relocated into the yard? It's just going to block the view as you look down that avenue. It's on the new plan that Chris gave, Chris gave us.
From Monroe?
Yes.
Anything else from the board?
The applications for C variances, for three C variances, one for front porch setback, the requirement's 20.41 feet. The proposed distance is 14.62 feet. The other variance is for garage location, has to be less than 26 feet from the rear property line. The proposal's for 45 feet. Third proposal's for the curb cut on Amherst Avenue. It's not permitted, they're requesting permission to have a curb cut. I believe the condition of that is it has to be 25 feet from the corner and also subject to the police chief's approval. The other condition I have is the front right deck or porch has to have 45-degree angle and a third is that the proposed tree on, I believe, Amherst Avenue in that corridor has to be eliminated from the plans.
No. No, they moved back from the, right, they were going to move it back from the, no, it's this one.
It's this one, okay.
It's going to be moved back out of the corridor.
Okay. On the corner, amended to the corner tree on the amended plans would be moved back as another condition. And any conditions that Mr. Rubin has that covered?
Yeah, I, I agree, except we also need revised architectural plans to show the swimming pool in the right location so it conforms to the Ponziro plan. I'll make a motion to approve this application.
To the plan, from what I can see, have really not a major impact, a negative impact to the neighborhood. impact to the neighborhood. I actually think it's, has some positive implications to it, uh, the corridor is, is gonna be a better deal, and moving the garage up, you'll still get some light and sun into the pool area, uh, still better than what was there, the two townhouses, and you'll have less curb cuts on Amherst Avenue than were existing, drive over tables.
Clem Moslaski?
I don't have any problem with the garage relocation, and I don't have any problem with the porch extension. But I have to concur with the chairman that those columns out there supporting the edge are gonna be a downright eyesore, and I think there's probably an architectural solution to eliminate those columns and develop a cantilever. So, just on the basis of not wanting to see that thing in Morgate, I wish I could take my vote in two parts, but apparently I can't, so I have to vote no.
Mike Richardson?
Well, since the, um, garage variance is actually, uh, abiding by, uh, one of the rules that we look for in variances where it's, um, I don't know, the words, upholding the public good, or, you know, it's, it seems like the neighbors want it, and, um, it'll improve the neighborhood, so I'm gonna vote for that, and I don't have a problem with the other issues, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Jim Galantino?
I think we moved from, uh, two units, which was two duplex, uh, one, two single family duplexes to one family, and reduced the parking by at least four cars. I approve the application based on the front yard setback for the deck and the garage location.
I approve the, um, the application, I, uh, like, Mr. Galantino, like the fact that we are going from two singles to one family.
I also approve the application, um, I don't see any negative impacts, um, I think we opened up the corridor to please the neighbors surrounding the property, um, I vote yes.
As with the rest of the board members, I think Mr. Galantino's point was well taken, I approve the application.
Due to the changes, um, the deck, the deck is not a problem to me, um, and the changes with the curb cuts, I approve this, uh, application.
I, I can approve it, I, it's gonna be a monstrosity, the house is a nice house, but it's huge as it is, and this is gonna only make it seem that much more massive in this neighborhood, so I vote no on the application.
I think the vote was actually seven to two, Johanna, right? Seven to two?
Seven to two.
Yes.
Next case is, uh, Michael and Zippur Talon, 7509 Bay Shore Drive, Block 1002, Lot 10, in the S sixty, S sixty district, for a C variance to allow synthetic grass, subject to zoning analysis by the planning board to interpret the provisions of the land use ordinance, requiring 35% shall be grass or other vegetative ground cover, taxes are current and proven of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin? Roger Rubin?
Yes, I do. The subject property is a single-family home on a bayfront lot on Bay Shore Drive, wherein the homeowners have replaced most of the landscape area with what they call synthetic grass, also called synthetic turf or synthetic lawn, in literature provided with the application. By the applicant's calculation, there are 1,800 square feet of synthetic grass and 350 square feet of mulch beds. The 1,800 square feet of synthetic grass has presumably replaced about that same area of real grass or lawn. Variance required in comments, per the land use ordinance, the following would pertain: At Schedule B1, under minimum total landscaping, it says, quote, "No less than 35% of any residential lot shall be covered by grass or other vegetative ground cover," unquote. At Section 175 dash 26D1, it says, quote, "All residential lots shall have a minimum of 35% of the lot landscaped. All areas not occupied by buildings, parking areas, patios, walkways, and/or any other impervious surface shall be suitably landscaped," unquote. At 175 dash 26D5, it says, quote, "Any landscaping which within two years of planting dies for any reason shall be replaced by the developers or by the current owner at their sole expense," unquote. And in the definitions section at 175 dash 2, it defines landscaping as follows, quote, "Landscaping for the purpose of determining compliance with the minimum landscape requirements in the city's residential zone, landscaping shall be limited to vegetative cover, including grass, shrubs, and trees." Based on these sections of the ordinance, the undersigned zoning officer, upon being informed that this formerly grass lawn had been replaced by the synthetic version, had no choice but to inform the homeowner there was a violation of zoning that had to be dealt with either by compliance or the seeking of a variance. I think the applicant is asking the board in the first instance to overrule my administrative decision and simply determine that the artificial lawn product is grass in the sense defined above. To support their position, they have submitted material by a manufacturer, Synthetic Turf International, a test report by Gary Asbury of the Professional Testing Laboratory, Inc., which deals with flow rate of rainfall, and a write-up of the Synthetic Turf Council, which talks about water conservation characteristics, reduction in use of pesticides and fertilizers, and reduction of the accumulation of tires and landfills. Should the board not overrule the administrative decision and thereby interpret the artificial turf to be noncompliant with the ordinance, the applicant, I believe, would ask the board to grant a variance from the requirements of the ordinance for reasons that they would present to justify the variance. I would offer some points for the board's consideration of this request. Number one, is the language quoted from the ordinance clear or not regarding the definition of the 35% landscape materials to be, quote, "vegetative cover," unquote, or could the word "vegetative" be properly considered to include polyurethane, polyethylene, urethane, and crumb, crumb rubber infill recycled from used tires as stated in the material submitted by the applicant? Number two, the application talks about the intent of Schedule B1 and lists an opinion about the ordinance's intent, but that intent is not set forth in the ordinance itself. In developing a new master plan and a new zoning ordinance in the coming time period, the planning board may or may not wish to express its intent in this regard, and in so doing, may or may not modify the requirement for vegetative cover. Should the process of variance action, uh, replace that kind of deliberate, careful, and scientific study that would take place as part of a, uh, master plan revision? Number three, because the material submitted is from a manufacturer or a trade association, would the board not be better served by an expert witness of its choosing, to be paid for by the applicant perhaps, to answer questions such as the following? Does the crumb rubber infill recycled from used tires contain any toxic metals, carcinogens, latex, that can cause allergic reactions, or other dangerous chemicals? As the product ages, what chemical products are used to repair rips and seams, and are there any negative impacts of these products? When a synthetic lawn is replaced, how is the old one disposed of? Does artificial lawn materials support birds, animals, or insects? Is there any danger with regard to combustibility? Can anything that leaches from the artificial lawn, that is, the lawn itself interacting with rainwater, or cleaning and treatment products interacting with rainwater, create toxicity to sensitive aquatic environments such as the bay, or the water table, or the aquifer? Does the synthetic grass create heat that increases the use of air conditioning? Does artificial turf harbor more bacteria than growing grass? What are the relative effects of grass versus artificial grass on carbon dioxide absorption, prevention of soil erosion, cooling, and water filtration? Finally, are there any reasons of hardship, health, location, et cetera, that may bear on the use of an artificial lawn for this particular family at this particular location? This, this is an interesting case, requiring guidance from our solicitor, possibly requiring two or three votes in a progression, which he will explain. If the board feels there is a basis for interpretation other than that utilized in this case, it votes on an A variance or an interpretation, and possibly a B variance being an overrule of an administrative decision. Failing both votes, it can vote on a C variance to allow a variation in this particular instance for reasons of hardship, relative benefit, or other criteria permitted by law.
Proceed?
My name is Michael Talon.
Zippora.
No, you need to talk into the mic.
T A L L E N T.
Mr. Rubus Talon, I just have a couple of questions for you before we start. I'm looking at your application that you both signed, uh, to the board. You checked off at number seven the type of application you're applying for. Can you look at that, at page two, do you have your application?
Hold on, I, I might have to go to the back.
Play. Application, sir? Yeah, you, you checked off that you're asking for a C variance, do you understand what that means?
Actually, when we received the first violation, I contacted Mr. Roger Rubin, because, quite frankly, I was unaware of any violation on my property.
Okay.
In his response back, he said that I needed to seek a C variance, so, based on that, I proceeded with a C variance request.
Okay. Do, do you want to proceed without a lawyer?
At this point, yes.
Okay.
I read Mr. Roger Rubin's response based on what he just responded to, and I am fully prepared to respond to every one of his points.
Okay. Well, Mr. Rubin's a zoning officer, you understand that he doesn't vote on the application, although he gives the board advice and interpretation?
There's such a bad echo, I did not, can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Okay. Mr. Rubin's a zoning officer, he actually doesn't vote on the application, even though he may give an opinion, that doesn't mean that the board's bound by that?
Yes, I understand that, sir.
So how do you want to proceed tonight? Do you want to proceed with a C variance?
Yeah.
A B variance or an A variance?
No, we came here as, for, seeking for a C variance, I don't see the need to go for some sort of master plan review. We're here as homeowners, representing our property, and we're seeking a C variance for our particular property, sir.
Okay. You may, and you can proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. I wanted to thank the planning board for the opportunity to present our application for C variance, to allow synthetic grass to be classified as grass or other vegetative ground cover, or as a substitution of such. As required by the land use Schedule B1, which requires 35% of lot to be covered by landscape, I'd like to point out Chapter 175 Land Use Development Requirements and Standards, 175 dash 26, Section D Landscaping, D point seven, Principles to, to Consider. Number one, Section B, landscaping shall be used to accent and complement buildings. I have taken some photographs, which I've also added and attached to the application, and based on my conversations with my neighbors, I don't think that there would be one person that would say that my landscaping does not accent or complement my building or anybody along Bay Shore Drive. Section G, ground cover shall be used for prevention of erosion. That's very, very clear as to what the land use principles and the principles to be considered when doing landscaping, is the fact that ground cover shall be used for prevention of erosion, which we'll get to, I have a very comprehensive study that was done by the FAA, which we'll be glad to discuss, that enumerates why synthetic grass handles erosion and that our synthetic turf.
Mr. Talon, do you have an expert that's gonna give the board information about the synthetic grass?
I'm here presenting for myself.
Are you an expert in synthetic grass?
I'm, I'm an expert based on my review of public record, yes.
What, what type of training do you have concerning synthetic grass?
Well, number one, I'm, I'm a developer, I work for Jack Truckee Development, I've been developing for the last 10 years, I've built 262 apartments in Maze Landing, I've seeked variances in Northfield, um, for signage.
I appreciate that you've been before boards.
Okay.
But the question really isn't whether you've been up here before boards, it's what type of expertise do you have that's gonna aid the board if they have a question about the synthetic grass?
Okay, number one.
Before you go on, are you sure you want to proceed tonight without an expert? Because I personally, legally, don't think you're an expert that can answer questions about synthetic grass. What's your education level?
I appreciate that.
I mean, what type of training, education level, expertise, I'm not doubting you, I just want to know that for the board's knowledge.
Okay, that's fine, I also own, beside working for Jack Truckee Development and TF Yachts, I also own a landscaping company, TNT Cutting Edge Lawn Care LLC, which is licensed with the state of New Jersey, as well as DEP. Even though I did not particularly install this grass, I referred to a licensed New Jersey contractor who handles installation of synthetic grass. I'm very familiar with DEP regulations with reference to fertilizers, pesticides, chemical applications, um, rates of nitrogen in sand, in sandy soils, lomy soils, so I feel that I'm capable of presenting myself in front of the board in reference to a C variance for synthetic grass on my particular property.
Okay, well, let me ask you a couple of questions on that. Where did you go, where, do you have a bachelor's degree?
I have an undergraduate degree at University of Miami, and a, and a MBA also from University of Miami.
In what field?
Business management.
Okay. Do you have any type of degree in biology, engineering, anything that you can give us some expertise on synthetic grass?
I'm not, I'm not a biologist.
Business, hold, I'm sorry, I won't interrupt you, just let me finish. A business degree, and even a master's degree in business, although very admirable, is not one that you can, I believe legally, you can give an expert opinion on synthetic grass.
Okay, and I appreciate that, sir, again, I've already testified to the fact that I own a landscaping company that is licensed through the state of New Jersey and through the DEP to apply pesticides and fertilizers. So in that application, I think that I'm capable of interpreting documentation that is available for public review through the FAA, through the state of New Jersey, through the Ocean, Ocean City Airport, which is a public airport, and it's publicly documented that they use synthetic grass to testify on my behalf, sir.
Okay. And when someone wants to ask, one of the board members wants to ask a question concerning the materials and these articles that you're bringing in, who do they ask? Where's the author of those materials, where's the person that has expertise and knows about that?
I brought copies, if you don't want to believe me, I have copies of additional documents that you want to refer to from the FAA, as well as through the DEP, as well as through Synthetic Grass International, which is recognized as an international synthetic manufacturer of high-end synthetic grass.
Well.
This is a well-studied document.
You understand, Mike.
This is not the first application of synthetic grass, even though in this small community, it seems like it's setting precedent. Synthetic grass is installed in most high-end communities all over the nation, so the fact that everybody's sitting here thinking that I'm setting precedent, it's far from precedent, sir. This is installed in Arizona, South Florida, Las Vegas, California, anywhere where there's a moratorium on grass, on irrigation of grass, the fact that we utilize, as a single-family homeowner, over 45,000 gallons of water for irrigation, which is wasted, I am capable of presenting myself intelligently and capably to this board.
Okay, well, we'll let the board decide that, you understand the ramifications, I don't know what the vote's gonna be, but if you're, you don't prevail getting a vote for a variance, do you know what the ramifications of that are?
And again, if I have to, I will.
Can you answer my question?
I do.
Can you answer my question?
I don't know why we're becoming antagonistic.
I'm not.
I came here as.
Because you're interrupting every time I ask a question.
No, because I.
No one's antagonistic. No one's antagonistic.
You are, sir.
I don't feel that I am, sir.
You're antagonistic, I don't appreciate it.
I don't feel that I am, I'm asking you a question.
You are. I feel like I'm capable of presenting myself, I understand the ramifications.
You are not an expert in this, in the sense that the board looks for. You're not. You may be an expert in your landscaping or something.
I'm a licensed contractor.
You've told us what your licenses were. You are not an expert. You're not a scientist in this area. That was his question. You're not. If you had brought somebody, if you lose tonight and have to appeal and decide to appeal, you could have saved yourself a lot of trouble. If you lose tonight, we can't re-vote on it, and you will have to appeal. He's giving you an opportunity to maybe withdraw now and come back with these experts, and you won't have to go through the appeal process. He's trying to do you a favor.
And I appreciate that. I really, honestly, I don't see the need to hire experts when I have expert documentation...
We have an expert lawyer here that's kind of advising you that you really should have experts with you if you don't want to appeal, if you lose tonight. If you don't want to do that, then please proceed with your case.
Thank you. I think we'll continue to proceed. I do appreciate your opinion.
Thank you.
Again, going back to Chapter 175 of the Land Use Ordinance, landscaping principles that need to be considered. Landscaping shall be used to accent and complement buildings. We've already discussed that. I don't think that anybody, including my neighbors or anybody on the board, based on the pictures or the application, could sit here and say that my landscaping does not accent my property or complement the buildings or anything on Bay Shore Drive. Section G, which is where I think that this complication may arise, ground cover shall be used for prevention of erosion. I have documentation that I'll be glad to discuss in reference to that. Oh, impervious material shall not be used in any landscape area. Weed-retarded mulch, porous, non-woven synthetic landscape fabric, or other materials shall be used. We obviously have synthetic material here. I've already presented independent laboratory testing, which shows that it is porous and it is drainable, and that it allows water to penetrate through its structure. Is Better With It All?
It's Better With It All.
It's Better With It All. There's an echo. Okay. I'm trying to talk, because I was back there and I just don't hear anybody else in here, so I'm trying to talk.
Talk loud, and they can hear you.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Okay, thank you.
Makes it any better than that.
Would you rather not have it? Okay. There's a really bad echo in here. At least it's not me. Okay. I'm not an expert on Chris's case, and I'll testify then. But Mr. Roger Rubin said, careful, an even scientific study. The first thing that I'd like to talk about is number one, the U.S. Department of Transportation and Federal Aviation Administration. If anybody is at the forefront of scientific study and making sure that our passengers on federal aviation traffic control are safe, it would be the U.S. Department of Transportation and Federal Aviation Administration. I have a document, it's called Airside Applications of Artificial Turf. I do have two extra copies if Ms. Casey or anybody would like to review it. I will present this, and I will be reading directly out of this document. It's, again, it was prepared by the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, in reference to airside applications of artificial turf. It was prepared in June 2006. The report used for analysis to determine the effectiveness of synthetic grass at airfields. Chicago O'Hare, Chicago Midway, Boston Logan International, Detroit Metropolitan, and the list goes on. But the one that I would like to enumerate on is Ocean City Municipal Airport, because that's the most comparable to where we are situated. Number one, because it is located directly on the bay, and because it does have tidal issues during high tide, the rain situation, and such. These airports all utilize synthetic turf for two particular reasons. Number one, constant complaints of erosion, which is what the planning board and the Land Use Ordinance details as a particular use for landscaping is to prevent erosion. Each one of these airports, including Ocean City Municipal, utilize comparable application of synthetic turf along taxiways and runways that were taken out of service numerous times because of tidal issues, flooding, heavy rains, and heavy traffic going off of the asphalt and onto the natural grass. It would flood, it would erode, and then if an aircraft were to veer off the edge of the asphalt, it could create a safety issue. Ocean City Airport does not have a full-time crew to handle the maintenance of their grass, so they would also subcontract that grass contracting act. And they have specific lighting at the end of their runway to make sure airport traffic did not go off the runway. And a lot of times, because of it being subcontracted, that lighting was also being impacted by these subcontractors. So, they had two different reasons why they wanted to try this synthetic grass out. One, because of erosion alongside the taxiways and runways, and two, because of the constant maintenance and need to subcontract out the grass cutting. What each one of these airports found in this FAA study, which was conducted, and part, and final report conducted on June 2006, and the document is available to the U.S. public through the National Technical Information Service, and is available at Springfield, Virginia. It's U.S. Aviation Research. They all conducted the same analysis, and they all came to the same conclusion that the erosion was completely eliminated by the use of the synthetic grass. They did not pour concrete, which I did not do either. Basically, going back, skipping back to what we did here. My wife and I have three children. We've lived in this home for going on now over 10 years, and my middle son has incredibly bad allergies. Initially, we thought that it was just directly from the grass, but after talking to one of our neighbors who happens to be our pediatrician, Dr. Butler, he said that it can actually be a direct result of the pesticides and the chemicals that the fertilizers and the applications are being put down. So, we started doing some research. And one of my other colleagues, Dr. Finkelson, who has a piece of property in Morgate, as you're well aware, there was a piece of property directly adjacent to him that was installed by the same contracting company that I utilized and advertised in Home and Decor Ideas of South Jersey. A two-page article by Y-Turf. They're licensed in the state of New Jersey, and they're licensed in PA as well. If you'd like to, we can pass this along if necessary. They installed the same particular grass over three years ago. I approached the homeowner, and he said that it was, he had no complaints. The contractor did a great job. There was no problems with puddling, with runoff, with anything, and he cut down dramatically on his water usage, his need to put down pesticides or chemicals. So, I contacted Y-Turf. And I spoke with the owner of Y-Turf. He came out and he gave me an estimate, and that's how we went along with that particular contractor. But going back to this federal aviation documentation, we've discussed the fact that the erosion problem has already been completely mitigated, both in Ocean City, where their soils are very comparable, they're very sandy soils, and Chicago O'Hare, where there's very heavy traffic because of the international traffic that's coming through there and the runoff on the taxiways. The erosion was completely mitigated. So, in my opinion, that also eliminates that concern for this board. If Chicago O'Hare, Chicago Midway, Boston Logan, and Ocean City Municipal, in a federal aviation document, all say that erosion has been completely eliminated, then our intention to make sure that our landscaping did not have any sort of erosion problems or create any sort of complications for our neighbors is limited. So, I'll move on. The next concern, which is another reason why I wanted to find something that was as heavy a document as the FAA, is Mr. Roger Rubin's concern about combustibility and flammability. Obviously, this is a polypropylene surface. So, somebody might be concerned, well, what if somebody drops something that's flammable? Is it going to catch on fire? What's going to happen? Well, in this document, which, again, I have two copies if you'd like to refer to. Try to be environmentally conscious, I want me two copies.
Again, just let me interrupt you for one moment. You're doing it again. You're testifying as an expert on whether it's flammable or not. We cannot even take this under consideration. I'm just telling you that now. If you want to continue, go ahead and continue. I'm warning you now.
Okay, but again, an engineer in the state of New Jersey, per se, Mr. Poncio, I've utilized his company for developmental purposes as well. I don't think any engineer in this area could testify to the fact that they know about flammability more so than a federal aviation document that's publicly documented.
So, is your person from the Federal Aviation Administration here tonight?
This is documented directly out of...
You don't understand. Please continue. You've been warned.
The FAA conducted a very extensive, scientific, thorough analysis as to the advantages and disadvantages, if any, of synthetic grass. Part of their scientific study is in reference to the combustibility and the flammability. They found within this document, synthetic turf could not be ignited using a propane torch. That is directly out of this document. I don't have to be an expert to expertly read a document that's available for public knowledge and prepared for by the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration. It says clearly, it would not melt under the flames or heat, but would not continue to burn. It would melt, but it would not continue to burn. So, the combustibility, flammability, actually based on FAA guidelines, it was advantageous because if somebody were to pour, which they did, 10 gallons of jet fuel directly on the synthetic turf, it would melt, but it would not allow the fire to spread. So, the FAA signed off and sealed on this document.
And you think this board is familiar with an FAA document? I understand, and you're telling me it's right there, and you're telling me they say this, and we have nobody here to question.
But based on the requirement...
Please continue. Keep on going.
I'm sorry, this is not nice. You're being not nice right now, and you're really showing disrespect. We came here without a lawyer.
Please, and you really should have had a lawyer for this case, but please continue.
A lawyer for grass. That's how frivolous and how ridiculous this community really is.
And that's why you should have brought some experts with you to help this area.
But again, I will testify to this, and then if it be, I'll hire whatever people I need to...
Will you?
We don't think it's going to be necessary.
Do you want, do you want to maybe ask for an adjournment? We can put it on for the next available list, and we'll give you the opportunity to speak to a lawyer at least, and maybe speak to an expert.
Remember the ramifications of losing tonight.
Because they're going to keep interrupting, so we're going to do it. But before we go, I want to answer a question. I want to know who drives a black Audi.
No, Black Mercedes. Who trespassed on my property? Who lifted up my grass? Who exposed a nail that my son stepped on? Who did not give documentation or credentials to my children to come onto my property?
That's, please, that's not a matter of the board. That's a matter, it's a matter to take to the police. Order. If that's a problem, order. If that's a problem, take it to the police. That's not a matter of the board. Please do.
I want, but listen, I want to know, they said they were on the jury, they came to
my house, it was my 11-year-old son, with my 17-year-old babysitter, my seven-year-old son, and my nine-year-old...
Take it up with the policeman.
They're stupid, they said they were...
Excuse me, you're out of order.
We're not out of order.
You are out of order.
They have Twitter, I want to know Kate, my house, they said they were...
You are out of order. You want the case stopped right now?
Yeah, the case is over.
The case is over.
You're anti-Semitic.
You're done.
We're going to break it.
You're done.
You're anti-Semitic.
lawsuit on air.
And you're calling the police, to leave my house, come back.
If you don't leave, I'm calling the police now. No, you're done. If you don't leave, we're calling the police now.
I'm calling the police, don't you. I'm calling the police on you, you're an underage boy on my property, touch my grand...
Cut it off.
Cut it off, I'm going to call the police right now. On the board, at the jury of this board, they said that...
Nah, 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 nah.
Good, I'm good. You'll hear from my, you owe my lawyer...
You're going to call our lawyers. Here's your plea. Even though your document says white cards, which I prepared for you.
There's the plea cards.
Thank you.
Whoever drove the, the black Audi, you're getting arrested. You broke my words. Cut it off.
Was great. Next case.
Yeah, that would be nice.
It's called bio.
Yes.
I don't think we're.
Okay, we're back in order. Please take your seats.
I fixed it.
What'd you do? Turned it down? Next case is Stan and Nancy Metter. 9317 Winchester Avenue, block 327, lot 86.01, in the MF District to grain a C variance for front setback and front landscape and possibly others. Taxes are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. The subject property is a newly created lot on the northeast corner of Adams and Winchester Avenue with frontage of 40 feet on Adams and 75 feet on Winchester and a total area of 3,000 square feet. The 200-story single-family house is proposed with entrance and driveway on Adams Avenue containing, per the John Obelenus architect plans, five bedrooms and three parking spaces as required. Total height per FEMA and Margate's Code is 30 feet above finished first floor, which is 11 feet, 1988 NAVD. Required variances: front setback porch on Winchester. Per the 200-foot survey by Ponzio Company, the requirement is 17.75 feet versus proposed setback of 6 feet to the side of the porch, which actually faces Adams, but its side has a front of Winchester. Front setback house on Winchester, per the 200-foot survey required, it's required to be 26.64 feet versus 6 feet to the house wall as designed. Front landscaping of Winchester, if the house were set back to the 17.75-foot required porch setback, the landscaping requirement would be a whopping 798 square feet versus 450 square feet as presented to constitute the 60% required. Comments and conditions. The plan actually includes a slight setback of porch issue on Adams. 9.77 feet is required versus only 9.75 as shown. Attorney Callahan, in conversations before this was written, has indicated the plan will be changed to remove this nonconformity. The zoning schedule indicates a front landscape deficiency on Adams, on Adams front that it's only 49.4%. My calculations actually indicate closer to 75%. Again, Mr. Callahan has assured me that either the calculation will be corrected, or if necessary, the plan itself changed to eliminate any deficiency if there is one. So revised plans are needed to codify these amendments, and there are no variances on Adams Avenue for the board to consider. Number two, as to the setback variances on Winchester, this appears a classic case of hardship per the size, shape, and orientation of the parcel. If the required porch and house setbacks were adhered to, it would be 26.64 feet back from the Winchester Avenue property line, and because a nine-foot driveway is required on Adams, the house would be 40 feet, which is the lot width minus nine, minus not, 40 feet of lot width minus nine, minus 26.64, or of course, a ridiculous 4.36 feet wide. All the other lots along Winchester Avenue are 125 feet deep, while the subject lot is only 40 feet deep measured from Winchester. As some compensation, consider the combined side setback of 19 feet exceed the requirement of 14.8. Total lot landscaping meets the requirement of the code, and there is no proposed detached garage, but rather an 8-by-10 foot shed. As always, site visits are instructive as to whether is there any interference with light, air, or views, and if so, to what extent. Aesthetics and floodproof characteristics are always in play as a consideration for board action as well. And finally, partly as compensation for the front landscape variance, the Ponzio plan shows a significant planting schedule somewhat exceeding the ordinance minimums. The board may wish to impose a condition that this schedule be adhered to in its, all its particulars. Other than as stated above in number seven and one, no additional conditions are suggested at this time.
Good evening. Brian Callahan of the law firm, Callahan, Thompson, Thompson, on behalf of Stan and Nancy Metter for 9317 Winchester Avenue. Just going over Roger's report, we did, Mr. Ponzio has a revised plan tonight, which does eliminate the 2 one-hundredths of an inch for the porch on Adams Avenue, and also makes sure that the landscaping is meeting the approvals on Adams Avenue. So what we're here tonight for is the front setback porch on Winchester, front yard setback on Winchester, and technically, a landscape variance on Winchester without that. I know it's been a late night, so let me call Mr., Mr. Bergen real quick for you. We have four exhibits for you. A1 is a site plan. A2 is an aerial plan. A3 is floor plans for Mr. Obelenus, and A4 elevation plans for Mr. Obelenus. Without further ado, let me call Mr. Ponzio.
Certainly do. Thank you.
Bergen, do I need to go through Mr. Ponzio's qualifications?
Our front yard setback is indicated in Mr. Rubin's report for the. Quarter lots are somewhat of a puzzle to solve. Every one seems to be, has its own. Average it, if you will, for the block, but when you're getting in conditions like this with. I agree with the dimensions in Mr. Rod, Mr. Rubin's report, where he said if you apply the setback requirement by taking the average to the front of Winchester and then take the side yard average, the side yard requirement here, you're left with like four-foot strip of land to build on. But when you take the parking strip over here, or. So obviously, that's not, that's not going to work. Either the lot is not buildable and for anything, or there'd be variance issued. Thus, this is a classic C2 case of hardship for this board. We are here seeking three variances. The way the building is laid out and the design by the architect, very nicely done, and try to adhere to every one of the ordinance requirements that we could, and there are three we just can't meet, and they're all on Winchester Avenue's side naturally. One is for landscape coverage. The coverage is calculated back to the required setback. Math, we're well short of that because the required setback being to the building wall, 26.6, only at 6 feet. So obviously, if you take into consideration the required area for the building to be set back, and due to the calculation of the 60% requirement, we're well short. There's no question about that. But what I, what I'll say is, for the area from the setback, that is, property line back to the building, we have 100% of landscaping. So in other words, we've taken advantage of every square foot we possibly could have from the front property line to the back property line, and we've landscaped it. So we'd get, we're volunteering and providing because we know we're asking for the variance. We have to give back something. We're giving back an, A, an enhanced landscape plan, we believe, above the ordinance standard, and also taking into consideration 100% of the area to landscape. We want to make this as beautiful as we possibly can.
Let me just jump in real quick. With respect to the enhanced landscape plan, Mr.?
So that's the first, first setback requirement, various requirements. Other things, they both relate to the building. Has a covered porch right in the front on Adams Avenue. Setback is 17.75 feet. Again, the proposal is at 6 feet to meet the line. Variance, we're asking for a variance from this board to allow us to place that porch to. Prior to 17, that would set back that, that part. Off the architecture of the building, it's not what we would recommend. The third variance is the wall of the building, I mentioned it briefly, where the requirement would be to set that building back. I didn't take a peek out and measure that tonight, tonight, it's about four or five feet. Relatively narrow lot, a legal-sized lot, no variance or anything like that. No reason for these particulars in this property to ask for the variance. So the renaissance that's been going on here now for 10-plus years is just, is just wonderful for the city. This continues that prominent corner, all these corner properties are so important, and I think this will fall right in line with what's. A new home, we all know what, what the flood situation is in this particular part of town, perhaps the lowest part. Without question, it's a requirement, and this building will be situated in accordance with your ordinance, a couple feet above. All the reasons I've stated, I do not, and the public good really goes to, in this particular case, the adjoining property owners. I think, I see this as a benefit to the adjoining property owners.
Substantial impairment to the zoning plan.
Lot is appropriate size, we just can't meet the letter of the ordinance because of the calc, the anomaly, if you will, in the calculation of the setback.
I don't have any other questions.
I have a question for Roger. Roger, was this prior to our ordinance change for the front yard setback survey? So this comes into play with the new change?
You have a pretty high foundation wall. Could you continue the landscaping adjacent to the building for the full length of the wall, both front and sides, visually transition to that height?
Good comment. Without a doubt, we could, we're only missing a little spot there, so.
Yeah.
No problem to do that.
And in front of the porch too. In front of the porch on the side street?
Especially the porch. It's something I happen to like very much, that comment, because we see these homes, not only in this town, but if they're elevated, I know areas in Atlantic City that are eight feet above the ground, and it's not the greatest aesthetic, but we have an opportunity to do that here. Without a doubt, we can do that.
Thank you. I have, I have one condition I need to have on record. We're seeing a lot of the homes that we had elevated, they're convert, they're trying to convert the lower areas to a living space prior to getting a CO. So I'd like to get it on record that there will be no conversion of that lower area ever, and, and have it on record. Can we make that a condition?
Does that have to be a condition when the rules are it can only be used for parking, storage, and access?
We're, we're seeing that, but people are still moving forward and converting those areas.
Illegally.
That'll be fine.
Before, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before you begin, I just had one additional comment as to elevation. My understanding is we're a few feet above the minimum, correct, where we need to be? I believe that was stated.
I asked you for a high variance for underneath, where we were applying with market, we're about end of class.
She's not asking that.
She's talking about first floor elevation.
Are you higher than you need to be?
You're exactly where we need to be? Okay, because my concern is we're here at that corner property, rather than have that aesthetic, negative aesthetic, as well as the slate lines. I want to see where it needs to be, not four feet above, something like that. Okay, thank you. That'll be fine.
Brian Obelenus?
Want me to hurry up?
John, hurry up and tell them about the floor class and the elevation.
Okay, this is a classic market home by size, by volume. First floor is living, dining, kitchen, mudroom, second floor, master bedroom, other bedrooms, third floor, again, bedrooms and a bathroom. It's classic in design. It's classic in design, um, but this particular property, because it's a corner property, we had to pay attention to all three sides or four sides and give it some interest, you know, especially on Winchester and Adams where the front, the front entrance is. So we had to give it more, possess more detail on all those three sides that face not only the streets, but the neighbors. And that was one of the challenges that we had to meet in addition to the hardship of the property itself. Again, simple, simple project, about twenty-seven-hundred square feet. Um, it meets all the height requirements. Um, again, the first floor, there is no headroom to put a space underneath, but it's high enough that obviously we meet the flood elevation.
Thank you, John.
That's it.
Mr. Callahan, no other questions for Mr. Obelenus?
Thank you. And the board, I hear no comments from the board. Is anyone here from the public that would like to speak? In opposition? Uh, it's okay.
We want...
So we. Thank you. That means nothing, but please. Public portion is closed by your motion.
Do we need any conditions or any conditions?
Any conditions, other conditions? Yes.
Uh, the conditions are revised plans to codify the amendments on Adams Avenue, the, the minor setback and the landscaping and that the enhanced landscaping will be installed and per Mr. Waszleski will be infilled on both the front of the porch on Adams and the empty space on Winchester.
Correct.
Okay, show that on the revised plans. Asking and keeping everything in line, I think it's going to make a major improvement to the neighborhood. I see no negative impact on the neighborhood, so I vote in favor.
I'm, I'm also in favor of the project. The circumstances of this property are such that the ordinance requirements create practical difficulties and cause hardship for the owners. It's a good project.
Mike Britzman?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the application. I think again, we're in a situation down there where we have these assisting lots that we need to give some leeway to, so I vote yes.
Can't believe how many people turned out. Maybe we can get the rest of the block done. Um, this was a flooded property, had over five feet of water in it, um, and was basically a substantial damaged property and I applaud the applicant for coming forward with a beautiful plan. Uh, as to the front yard setback and the landscaping, I approve this application and this being a good question.
I too approve this application. I think it's, um, it's really going to enhance the neighborhood.
I agree with the rest of the board members. I think it'll enhance. We're getting rid of some of the mess. I vote yes.
I looked at the properties across the street on both corners and the setbacks are about the same as what you're going to have. I also approve the project.
Yes. I vote yes for the application for all the reasons that have been mentioned.
Thank you, Dave, for adding that. Uh, this is a classic case of a har, of a legitimate hardship. Uh, there's no detriment, there's no negative effect on the neighborhood. There's going to be a, the board, there's other business, so the meeting will continue.
Remind them about the...
Your party will continue with the greenhouse, so please vacate the premises.
Discuss what we're going to do with these Talents, okay? I guess the board asked, told something about your lot on my biggest properties. They have to allow you a few extra options unless they approve the application.
Okay, now we're, we're at a closed session. At this point in time, I'm going to talk to the board about the Talent application. The, um, my advice to the board at this point in time is for me to contact the Talents in writing by way of certified, regular or overnight mail to make sure they get a letter from me, um, essentially informing them that, uh, they, they'll have the opportunity to be put on the next available list to continue their application as well as giving them certain standards of decorum, et cetera, that I feel necessary, uh, that are applicable at the board hearings. Is anyone, is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Stanley, October would be the next available listing, is that all right?
Yeah, October...
Eighteenth.
October what?
Oh, oh, it's September nineteenth.
October thirtieth.
Thirteenth.
And the next meeting, just to remind everybody, is September eighteenth. It's a week early. September eighteenth. Vacation again?
Stanley. One more question. Okay. It was a tape running the entire time during a closed session, which appears on our website as soon as we moved into our...
We have to remove the closed session.
Okay. I would say.
Well, we, we went into closed session.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying remove the closed session from the public's access, not remove the closed session. That has to stay. Is that, am I understanding that right?
That's my question.
Okay. Remove it from the public's access because it's not public at this point in time.
Are you going to let them understand that they're, they're in violation? So if they do get a buyer for that house, they wouldn't be able to get a CO.
Exactly.
And they even, I think they even know that maybe that would be private information.
I, I think what I'm going to probably do is because there hasn't been a vote on that yet, I will say that, that our zoning office's interpretation of that stands at this point in time. And that that's going to be the risk they take. I don't want to give them too much, it's their, see, because it's their obligation Yeah, well, yeah, again, we're not in the Department of Legal Advice. Just for the record, Ms. Talents back at, uh, ten of nine and she's asking, what, what do you need, Ms. Talents?
Um, the fact is I need your money back to the community. How we...
All right. Do you need anything else here? Okay.
Okay, I entered this as an exhibit. Obviously, you can come up with whatever you want.
Ms. Talents, while you're here, why don't we, um, go over something with you, if I may? Okay? We, that's okay. We, the board has decided, um, because of the issues that came up tonight and that we had to stop the meeting and we won't get into why or why not at this point in time, but the board is going to give the opportunity to come back on October thirtieth to complete your application.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm hoping, I'm going to send you a letter. I'm hoping at that time that we can get through your application and that, um, that you can be heard.
We are going to be meeting with, um, a lawyer as well as the man that actually put it in will be here to represent us because he's the one who put it in and I'm assuming that'll be the expert that you have been asking for all night.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good idea to get an, try to get advice of an attorney.
Thank you.
Okay.
I hear a motion to adjourn. Call a favor.
Hi.
Who do you want? You want to say something?
Go ahead, I dare you.